Good morning. It's 9:00 AM. And welcome to the Friday, September 13th, meeting of the California Coastal Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here in person, the three of you, and on Zoom. And I'd like to call the roll, please, Vanessa.
Commissioner Geary.
Present.
Commissioner Baczko. Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Eckerly.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Aqui.
Commissioner Harmon. Commissioner Conkle.
Here.
Commissioner Nadoff.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Oronka.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Yep, here I am.
Chair Hart.
Present.
You have a call.
Great, thank you so much. All right, I'd like now to, well, my computer is not working, but virtual meeting procedures, please.
Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at calspan.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the Calspan website. Those who wish to address the Commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submission are available on the Commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 AM on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item up until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission's staff at 562-477-9089. Again, that number is 562-477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions on how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the Commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to agenda changes.
Good morning, Chair Hart, and to the Commission and to everybody joining us today. The agenda changes sheet that was posted to the Commission's website does remain accurate, except for one addition that I'll start with. And that is Item 6C. This is application number 52494. Applicant is Ava Equities in Laguna Beach. That matter is postponed. Item 9A, this is the appeal A5DPT 2423 from the city of Dana Point. That is withdrawn. Item 10A, it's application A5DPT 2237, the fallazate application from Dana Point. That is postponed. Item 10C, it's application 5243, Las Vegas Beach House in San Clemente. That is moved to consent. Item 11A, that's permit number 5141604A2. This is the Waldorf Astoria Monique Beach Resort and Club matter in Dana Point. That's moved to consent. And then Item 13.5A, this is the city of Carpinteria's LCP amendment on accessory dwelling units. That is postponed. And that concludes the agenda changes.
Thanks so much, Mr. Schwang. All right, we'll now open the meeting to general public comment and ask, Chris, how many speakers do we have?
We now have 15 speakers.
Okay. Are they all on Zoom or do we have folks here?
We have a couple in person.
Great, we called those and then we'll move to Zoom and everyone will have two minutes.
All right, we'll just go straight into it. Mandy Sackett, followed by Tony Tersol.
So shocking to have you in person. I still can't adjust. Morning.
Okay, I have a PowerPoint. I'm willing to tip if it makes it possible. Good morning, Chair Hart, Commissioners. So nice to be here. I'm here with two important updates regarding San Clemente's beaches and Orange County Transportation Authority's plans to armor them. First, OCTA's railroad armoring that was placed under an emergency permit 2021-2022. It's shown in the slide here. This is in San Clemente. We've been talking to you about it for a few months now. It's fronting the Cypress Shores HOA and staff is moving forward with the CDP for this, for permanent retention of this armoring. And it's my understanding that they're discussing mitigation, potentially through sand replenishment or an INLU fee. We need stronger and more comprehensive mitigation and to compel OCTA to plan better. Beyond sand and recreational loss, we're calling for a limited duration for the permit, a long-term plan to relocate or get the tracks off the beach. Lateral public access here was completely lost by the seawall before you could walk this beach, connect it from San Clemente State Beach down to Tressles and San Onofre State Beach. That's no longer possible. So we're calling for a lateral trail extension along San Clemente's coast in restoring what was once a walkable, passable beach. Reports of surfers have also been injured here. The rocks are a little undersized and being mobilized by the shore break. And so it's a clear public safety concern. If you look sort of in the far point where the waves are breaking, that's the start of Tressles Surf Break. Next slide, please. And then just really quickly on another subject. OCTA has also submitted a CDP for another enormous seawall, basically to extend that seawall all along San Clemente State Beach by 2/3 of a mile long, 60 feet wide. It would completely devastate coastal access, wipe out the beach and dunes. 60 feet goes into this dry sandy beach that's shown there. So we're prepared at Surf Rider to fight this with everything we've got, and I hope that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Billy. Next, Tony Tersol. And then we actually had another speaker slip that we found at the front desk, Kathy Biella.
And I have a presentation as well. So I'm speaking about Carmel State River, River State Beach, which is just a few miles away. I hope you've seen it. This last Tuesday, the Monterey Supervisors adopted their final environmental impact report for a project that will irrevocably change the character of this beach and risk upsetting the dynamics of the shore processes here. This place connects visually and physically with Point Lobos and the estuary and the Carmel River and Pollo Cronos State Park and the mountains beyond. Next slide, please. This is scenic road, which is what the project is about now. And that red curb pretty much parallels where they had some damage. So this is what they wish to protect at risk of a beach. Next slide, please. So that shows the extent of the road damage. And it's hard to see with this amount of light, but there's a green area that shows the easement, the scenic lands that are available to the road. And it turns out, if these maps are correct, right where the road damages, there's room to realign the road inland to get away from some of the damage, perhaps. Next slide. These are the houses that are there. And the house that's actually opposite that damage isn't served by that road. They have access from the backside. So even if you lost the road right there, other people would still have access on a one-way road. Next slide. This is the damage from the beach. Next slide. I see, I'm running out of time and I would respectfully ask if I could have an extra minute. Thank you. This is a view of the beach. And it's hard to see, but up in the sort of right corner is where the damage is. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. So the red up on the road shows where that damage was. And that brown line shows the extent of the seawall that they're proposing, which is quite large. It's 1,000 feet. And, you know, this is a special, it's a very special place. Next slide. This shows when the river does flow to the north, what they're trying to protect against. And this was in March of 2017. Next slide. Shows, there's a slide that seems to be missing, but, no, this is it. It shows the restoration, the natural restoration that occurs through the processes that we have now. Next slide. So this is the place. And this is what Coastal Commission is about, protecting places like this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for alerting us to this.
Kathy Biella. And then we'll move on to our Zoom speakers, starting with Penny Alea, Adam Leverens, and Andrea Luker.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. The most important conditions for the CalAM project approval will be addressed soon, hopefully this year, on whether current water rights exist for CalAM or whether there are any possibilities for future water rights. The report of the administrative hearings referred by the State Water Resources Control Board will also opine on whether the water extraction is really from the ocean or from groundwater and whether Marina's water supplies will be damaged. This report is finally just around the corner. Everyone knows now that the peninsula will have enough water to meet all their future needs through the success of the Pure Water Monterey Recycled Water Project. Recently, the Regional Water District had an important win at a Lafco hearing, paving the way for the eminent domain buyout of CalAM. Condition 17 of the approval for the CalAM project asks us to interact with Marina residents. And there is no compelling reason to subject our public at this time to what is an insult to enormous injury. We hope that the Coastal Commissioners understand our regional situation in which the CalAM DCL project is unnecessary, unjust, and illegal, and that we have real solutions that will avoid environmental injustice, save 35 acres of Escha, create public water ownership, and produce sufficient water for the peninsula for decades, all without CalAM. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Now to Zoom, starting with Penny Alea, Adam Leverens, and then Andrea Luker.
Good morning, Commissioners, and happy Friday, Penny Alea. On January 15, 2004, I joined a large crowd at a Coastal Commission hearing to oppose the development of the Dana Point Headlands. The city of Dana Point had its legal entourage with them that day and the project was approved. Fast forward to 2024 and the Scoff Law is still using its legal muscle to dodge Coastal Act compliance, evidenced by their withdrawal of the CDP that was to be heard today. This isn't the first experience this Commission has had with the city doing inlands. Shortly after the Headlands development was completed in 2009, the city limited public access at Strands Beach at the urging of the developer. For six years, the Commission was embroiled in litigation. In 2016, the Strands Access was finally reopened to the public. Years later, we are still fighting the city and their legal team over public access. This time, the city insists on public access that is leading to the extinction of an endangered species. Why are they doing this? In 2009, it was all about serving big money. Now what? In December 2023, enforcement staff sent the city a letter regarding this issue and advised them that if they did not accept a CDP application as resolution to their violations within 15 days of receipt of the letter, that the Commission would consider its options to ensure trail hours that are protective of an endangered species. My question today is what options will this Commission be considering? Ongoing violations deserve enforcement action. Commissioners, please don't wait to act. You have the solution. Extinction is not an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Adam Leverens, Andrea Luker, and then Dan Silver.
Good morning. There's a CDP presently before Coastal Commission staff that proposes changes to mooring fields in Newport Beach. On the photo in the upper right of the slide on the graphic here, this is a mooring field as it presently exists. I'd ask that you know the existing water space on top of the photograph and the number of vessels using that water space and that there are safe distances between those vessels. Then I'd also point out that between each row of boats in the mooring field, there's what they call fairways, which are used to get on and off the moorings. The diagram on the bottom half of the page is the city proposed reconfiguration of mooring field C. And what it does is it removes the fairways between each row of boats and substitutes it for a fairway between every two rows of boats, pushing the boats closer together. Getting on and off a mooring is very challenging and even more so depending on wind and tide conditions. Next slide, please. On the top, there's an email from Newport Beach Harbor Commissioner Ner Cunningham to read Bojano at State Lands, talking about the Open Water Initiative and how this would benefit the harbor by making more open water. Below that is a section of U.S. Code outlining Army Corps of Engineer Pierhead and Bulk Headlines and noting that nothing is to extend past those lines. Directly below that, we have Beacon Bay Dock, where Harbor Commissioner Cunningham lives. And you see the dock going past the pierhead line, past the line 16 feet beyond the pierhead line, and past the project line. Next slide, please. And I'm going to request another 30 seconds, Chair Hart, if that's okay.
You know what? We're sort of going over on everybody, so if you could wrap it up quickly, that would be great.
Okay. This final slide, the blue image is a proposal of the new dock over the existing dock, which is in red. And the Open Water Initiative, when it detriments mooring permittees, is a good selling point for the city. But for the affluent dock owners, when their docks extend past designated U.S. Code lines and they expand their footprint, there's no mention made of it. And I just hope that you'll note the hypocrisy when this comes before you. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Andrea Luker, Dan Silver, and then Janet Rogers. Andrea Luker.
Perfect, very good. Good morning. My name is Andrea Luker. I am speaking today for React Alliance, but also as an individual who's spent 39 years wandering the beaches and the entire coastline of San Luis Obispo County as a surfer, a kayaker, a beach runner, and as a government official. On the East Coast, the death toll of cetaceans continues to skyrocket. This, in the last few days, our East Coast sisters and brothers have reported a dead humpback off Block Island in Rhode Island and a beautiful mature whale off Long Island, both with no apparent injuries. These are reports, there are reports almost daily of dead marine mammals on the East Coast in close proximity to offshore wind activity. In April of this year, Equinor was allowed to begin their offshore site surveys using decibel levels up to 240 here on the West Coast, smack dab in the middle of whale migration. Due to the unusual mortality events on the East Coast, we began our own tally of dead cetaceans here on the West Coast, as sad as that may seem. As of today, we've recorded seven cetacean deaths in proximity to site surveys being conducted in our offshore water by both Equinor and Inverge. We've recorded three juvenile humpbacks and four dolphins. And remember that typically about 10% of marine mammals who die actually wash up and are found, the remainder sink and are unrecorded. Just the fact that on the East Coast, NOAA has issued incidental take or harassment authorizations for thousands of marine mammals tells us there is a correlation. Alarmingly, in an interview this week on our local KSBY News, an official from Equinor Atlas Wind stated, and I quote, "No marine mammals were harmed during their surveys." What a curious, ridiculous, quite frankly, disingenuous statement to make. They have no idea. The conduction of these site surveys absolutely conflicts with the Coastal Act, specifically in the lack of preservation of natural coastal resources. My tenure goes back to the Peter Douglas days and I wonder if he were here, he would question whether you as Commissioners and staff are working to save the coast on this specific issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dan Silver, Janet Rogers, and then Mika Nuda. Dan Silver.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Coastal Commission. I'm Dan Silver with Endangered Habitats League in Los Angeles. I'd like to point out an irony regarding the Dana Point Headlands. Beginning 30 years ago, Endangered Habitats League began fighting for its protection, opposing a development plan to pave over the rare habitat and to move the Pacific pocket mice somewhere else. Absent this animal and the Coastal Act, the Dana Point Preserve would not exist today. But rather than having respect for the mouse, the city is unwilling to respect science-based limitations on excessive public use, limitations endorsed by the state and federal wildlife agencies. The landowner, the Center for Natural Land Management, has produced a balanced plan for access, yet the city is blocking it in violation of the city's local coastal program. We ask that the Commission enforce the local coastal program, protect these truly endangered animals, and provide for compatible, science-based public use. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Janet Rogers, Mika Nuda, and then Patricia McPherson. Janet Rogers.
Yes, I have a slideshow, yes, thank you. Okay. I'm Janet Rogers with the Embarcadero Coalition in San Diego. Next slide. Where is our world-class waterfront? We don't have a great space. Next slide. In 2006, Frank Ken talks on a great waterfront to the world, talked about the need for 100 activities. In 2014, port consultant HKS said, "We don't have a great waterfront." The idea was to transform the Embarcadero. Next slide. Focus on place-making for people, cool places and lots of activities that draw diverse population while promoting the economy. Hotel rooms, out-of-town conventions, and blocked water views do not attract the 3.3 million people in San Diego County to the waterfront. Concrete walkways and access to thumb piers is not enough to satisfy public access. Next slide. Instead, water views will be blocked, view corridors don't exist, and parks will be eliminated. You had the final say to accept or reject the port's privatization of public land and water. We rely on state agencies to protect our public access and public assets. Where is our world-class waterfront? Next slide. The PMPU withholds necessary detail and information in violation of Coastal Act Section 3711. It's missing 1/3 of the Planning District 3, all of Planning Districts 5 and 6. Next slide. The port uses divide and conquer. They think they can slide the enormity of their privatization plans past you. Next slide. In 2014, Diana Lilly, Coastal Commission staff, wrote this to the port. Avoiding any new additions to the massive buildings blocking San Diego's waterfront as well as restoring new views to the shoreline should be a high priority of the port in the future. The port's doing the opposite. Please don't let this happen. Next slide. See you next month in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mika Nuda, Patricia McPherson, and then Lisa Gant. Mika Nuda.
Hey, good morning, happy Friday. My name is Mika. I'm here to speak about the profound impact that Queer Surf, an organization that is transforming lives and including my own life, through their incredible work by helping queer people have more access to surf resources and to help this community engage in marine science and coastal stewardship. I don't have a photo. I was hoping to submit it, but I missed the deadline. So just imagine there's a photo with 30 beautiful people out in Moro Bay. We're all across the coast, all over California, but most recently, we are in Moro Bay. I live in Orange County, just 20 minutes from Laguna Beach and Dana Point. But despite living so close, it took me 30 years to find an organization like Queer Surf. As a queer individual, finding a supportive, inclusive community has often felt like a very uphill battle. But when I discovered Queer Surf, I was seeking more than just a surfing group. I was looking for a space for my identity to be embraced and a place where I could build meaningful connection with the ocean. And Queer Surf really provided that for me. So through their programs, I was able to connect deeply with my own body and the ocean and discovering a sense of belonging and acceptance in a way that I never have. Queer Surf does more than just offer surf opportunities. They are advancing surf culture by promoting inclusivity and advocating for better access to surf resources and also engaging the community to understand marine science and just all that. So, yeah, I hope that the Coastal Commission continues to support and support more of organizations like Queer Surf. Your support ensures that everyone, regardless of their identity, has the opportunity to connect with the ocean and build supportive communities. Thank you so much for your guys' time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Patricia McPherson, followed by Lisa Gant, and then John Dow. Patricia McPherson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good morning. Patricia McPherson, Grassroots Coalition. I'm here to request an amendment to CDP 5-17-0253-A1, the unpermitted drains in Biona Wetlands. We have, in the years since the Commission made a decision to remove the actual drain components, we have new information. Grassroots and others prevailed in our sequel lawsuit against the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The department now needs to do a totally new EIR and adhere to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, Groundwater Dependent Ecosystems, which is Biona. We have changed circumstances, which we have a restoration of Biona that has taken place. The targeted species, pickleweed, has regrown throughout the areas of these unpermitted drains. And it would be, we believe, a violation of the Coastal Act to go in and do a harmful removal of these drains when they can simply be squeezed with cement and leave them in place and not disturb the surface and all of the new pickleweed that has grown back throughout the area. I would also like to draw your attention to the fact that CDFW is currently using glyphosate in Area A, that we've been apprised by the CDFW that they are using this poisonous chemical. It is disallowed by the county Board of Supervisors for use in the Biona area by county workers, as it is across the United States in numerous cities because it's a carcinogenic. And no studies have been done to determine what are the potential harmful effects of this spray and overspray onto the grasses and other plants that are out there. They are currently spraying it, we know, on sweet fennel, which is currently filled with flowers for insects with flowers for insects and has numerous swallowtail butterflies and...
Thank you. Next, Lisa Gant, followed by John Dow and Sherry Hafer. Lisa Gant.
Hello, I'm Lisa Gant from Save Our Beaches. Since the rail uses our public beaches in San Clemente, it too should be held accountable in their stewardship. Accountability to our coastal resources should be a requirement of using them. Generous tax funds flow to OCTA, yet the public is left begging coastal government entities to put protections in place that will not only sustain the railroad but also protect the beaches. The real irony here is that what is good for the beach also benefits the rail. The Coastal Rail Resiliency Plan now includes sand replenishment. It only makes sense that while OCTA maintains its tracks, it also maintains our beach with sand. I have yet to see clear evidence of proactive efforts to obtain emergency coastal permitting of the placement of sand OCTA has identified as hotspots. Boulders without sand replenishment dumped on what the railroad calls Area 4 will destroy the state beach in San Clemente. It would be a tragedy to ruin more public access in such an irresponsible manner. The rail's movement off the beach does not seem feasible or likely due to the prohibitive cost and viability of such a move. Therefore, just as OCTA has given the responsibility with tax dollars to maintain our highways, it should share the responsibility to maintain and not destroy the beach it uses every day. OCTA likes boulders. They know how to drop them from the train onto the beach. Without sand replenishment and a minimizing of boulders, I fear our state beach will look like Cypress Shore Beach does now, with no beach at all. Mitigation for the destruction of Cypress Shore Beach should be applied where the devastation occurred. Access to trestles should be restored. Please provide emergency sand replenishment permits for OCTA's identified hotspots so that history doesn't repeat itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, John Dow, followed by Sherry Hafer and Mandy Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Dow, Save Our Beaches, San Clemente, speaking today as I have for over two years by Orange County Transit Authority's Beach Destruction in San Clemente. Through the efforts of this commission, Save Our Beaches and others, OCTA seems to finally recognize they cannot obtusely act in only their interests but must seek collaborative solutions that produce the greatest public benefit. However, OCTA staff comments at their recent board meeting last Monday reflected an organization still in need of an attitude adjustment. During questioning from their board on their coastal resiliency project and the use of sand replenishment as a part thereof, they made excuses, failed to pursue obvious alternatives, expressed frustration with this commission's and the corps' conflicting missions and requirements, and suggested only they possessed a sense of urgency and this commission did not. Your missions are not conflicting, just different. Also, your requirements protect the public from OCTA's past actions, and after years of their delay in avoidance of sensible and proactive track protection measures, it's hypocritical for them to state that they are the only ones with urgency. What is urgent is to require OCTA to pursue and implement a sand replenishment first permit and for this commission to approve it on an expedited basis. Ideally, they should piggyback on the San Clemente's November replenishment project and place as much sand as possible on their identified hotspot. Our fear is OCTA is slow-walking the permitting process, so when the inevitable emergency happens, possibly this winter, they will revert to the role playbook of dumping boulders and all our efforts to preserve this coastline will be for naught. Lastly, a significant mitigation requirement must be imposed on OCTA for the damage they've already caused in South San Clemente. The mitigation should be consistent with the scope, size, and duration of the damage and be directed where the damage occurred. Only with meaningful consequences for past bad acts can we deter future ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Hafer, followed by Mandy Davis and Rachel Wilson. Sherry Hafer.
Hi, good morning. My name is Sherry Hafer. I am a director of React Alliance and Central Coast Women for Fisheries. My family has a commercial fishing business out of Morro Bay. The screen has a picture of the satellite tracking from the offshore wind company Golden State Winds survey vessels since it began doing high-resolution mapping in August. They are located in the Morro Bay lease area just off the southern corner of Monterey National Marine Sanctuary. Their wind energy area is 80,000 acres big. Note how they go in very straight lines, make tight turns. This requires loud positioning systems that emit continuous anthropogenic noise of up to 190 decibels at 9.5 Hz. Note that they work 24/7 through the night and fog and never stop. Where are the mammals? Where are the turtles? Why do they never stop? This is the same thing that happened with Atlas Wind's survey, April through July. They never stopped. For your information, it is against the Endangered Species Act to have continuous noise over 120 decibels at low frequencies over 24 hours in endangered species habitat. The endangered leatherback turtle habitat is in this wind energy area. The Coastal Commission was given a letter from Rand Acoustics before your decision to give Atlas Wind a CDP in July. In that letter, he warns that there are discrepancies between what the sub-bottom profiler is capable of and what Atlas Wind documented in their application, a difference of 21 decibels. Also, the beam width in their application is documented at 51 degrees and is capable of 114. Much depends on the watts, but this is not in the application. Rand concludes that there is issues concerned... With all these issues, there is concern that there's inadequate protection of marine species during project activities. Last night on KSBY News, they reported in the Marine Mammal Center that they had 150 dead mammals reported since July 19th on the central coast. Commissioners also got a study about the stress response of anthropogenic noise to Atlantic cod, but that there's a decrease in production of embryos of over 50% from the stress of continuous noise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mandy Davis, followed by Rachel Wilson and Margot Griswold. Mandy Davis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm having problems with my computer here. My name is Mandy Davis. I'm president of React Alliance. Additionally, I am representing a new national offshore wind opposition alliance called NOAA, and I am speaking on behalf of them as well. The last time I was at one of your meetings, it was most distressing for me. This was in July, when you were looking at the CDP for Atlas Wind for their near-shore studies, the HRG, and for the bottom studies they're going to be doing. It was really evident at that time, the clear bias of the staff. The clear bias of the staff, which is inclusive of the fact that they did not refer to any of the more recent studies that have come out of Great Britain and that have come from the east coast, where these studies are an absolute proof or direct correlation and high, high-correlative... You know, everybody keeps saying, you know, I know I'm popping around all over the place, but I'm getting really tired of hearing correlation does not meet causation. When you have correlative data that has such a high percentage, you have to look at it. And this is something that the staff is not doing. It's something that the commissioners are not doing, and it is really evident that this is going on, that the information that's being given to you is being cherry-picked. The other thing that was so distressing for me was to watch the amount of virtue signaling that happened during that meeting with the commissioners, to get up and say that they were so distressed about the whale deaths and was all because of climate change. Where are the emaciated animals? Where is the evidence of climate change being the cause of all of these cetacean deaths? There is no evidence, but there's plenty of evidence that points to offshore wind, the surveys, the construction, and the operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rachel Wilson, and then our final speaker is Margot Griswold. Rachel Wilson.
My name is Rachel Wilson. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Staff. I know that you are in gorgeous Monterey, but think back to you when you were in Morro Bay and when you walked down our Embarcadero and looked at the derelict power plant sitting right across from our beautiful estuary and otters. Imagine now that the power plant magically disappeared and then instead there was a beautiful, open park-like space full of birds with maybe a Morro Bay aquarium modeled after the Monterey Bay aquarium, something visitor-serving commercial. Our general plan and LCP, which thankfully you approved this spring, now has the land use for this power plant property as visitor-serving commercial. Unfortunately, there is a plan to put the world's largest lithium best on this prime property. This best is not coastal-dependent, and actually lithium explodes when exposed to water, making this property in a tsunami zone rather dangerous. In response to this proposal, and out of a concern for the safety of our community and wildlife, a group of citizens qualified a citizens initiative for the November ballot. This is Measure A24. Measure A24 is simply a land use initiative. It states that if the city council approves a project that requires the land use to change from visitor-serving commercial at the power plant or commercial recreational fishing on the waterfront side, the voters of Morro Bay would also have to approve the project. First, the city council would approve it. If they approve it, then it would go to the voters. If the voters approve, the project would advance to you for your expert analysis. In the future, hopefully, we will be asking the California Coastal Commission to make the change to the LCP that Measure A24 will require. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Margot Griswold.
Good morning, Commissioners. Margot Griswold, Restoration Ecologist and Board Member for Los Angeles Audubon Society, speaking today for the society and our 3,000 members and supporters. I've been getting some calls recently and have questions about the efficacy and the legality under the Coastal Act of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife spraying Areas A for fennel at this time of year. Also, we got calls about the fencing in Area A several months ago. We wrote a letter about that and asked that the Coastal Commission include the requirement, which is already a legal requirement on CDFW, to have a land management plan. A land management plan will stop wasting the Coastal Commission's time on the staff of CDFW not conforming to the Coastal Act. A proper land management plan would, among other things, have a section talking and prioritizing vegetation removal, methods of use, et cetera. It would really save us a lot of time, and also, Los Angeles Audubon Society supports grassroots... Patricia McPherson's asked that the drains in Area B not be removed but pinched off and protect the resources there. All these things could be protected by a proper land management plan, followed by then a potential for a restoration plan, which none of it exists now. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Chris. I want to thank everyone who took the time to speak before us. Your comments are so important and bring to our attention things that otherwise we might not know about, and that's the same for staff. So, thank you so much for taking the time. I'm going to turn to the statewide issues in just a minute, but before I do that, I'm going to ask if any commissioners have any comments or questions in response to public comment.
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Gary.
Thank you, Chair. I know I've asked this before, but can we get an update on where the OCTA issue is? I do have some, you know, concerns about what was raised today and as our mandate is coastal access protection. This is something we're going to start to see more and more, right, with sea level rise and competing interests? So, just wondering what the status of that is.
Sure, happy to, and I'll give it to Carl to give a little bit more specific, but actually, Carl and I met with the CEO of OCTA on Monday and got a little bit of an update on where they are on their environmental review process. They're sort of not quite at the stage of kicking that off, but really going to be digging into alternatives analysis. We talked about the need for both, you know, addressing the issues with the tracks but then ensuring public access and a beach in these areas and how that important that was. So, we reiterated kind of what this commission has said in the past and where our position, and they understand that, which I think is good, and they committed to a full environmental review process that would look at all those alternatives. I think the biggest probably concern for us is the timeline for what that environmental review, you know, a full environmental review takes time, and it's unclear exactly how long. I think they provided an estimate of something in the two-to-four-year range, and the concern I think we have is, as you've seen in all the pictures, those tracks, we get a couple winter storms, there could be some significant problems. So, I am concerned about what the response will be in that situation. I think there are some legitimate issues related to how fast even sand replenishment projects can be pulled together from other agencies. I think we've been pretty clear, we would do our darndest to find the fastest process we can. But there are, you know, we do have to do some work, I think, with some of our fellow agencies to figure out how to, you know, how to develop a coordinated process that is as fast as it can be. So, we'll be reaching out to the Army Corps, making sure we're coordinated with the city to see what the options are, because I think our, you know, we would really like there to be options other than rock, obviously. So, that's where we're trying to head, and I am concerned that we could be in a situation where we're being asked to do that again as an emergency permit.
And speaking of options, have they looked at moving the tracks? I know we're looking at that down in San Diego. Are they even having that conversation?
We have been having that conversation with them. That's obviously a long-term, just like it is in San Diego, it's a long-term effort, and there has, they have started to think through that effort.
Okay.
What they're, I think they're trying to figure out who would be the appropriate lead for that type of a study and what would it look like. It's obviously difficult and controversial, but they have talked about that. I think any effort that, you know, any permit that would come before the commission, like we did in Del Mar and some of the other projects in San Diego area, we would, you know, use that opportunity to make sure we're moving those planning efforts forward, and we've been clear about that, too. So, we're trying, but I, you know, I do think that there is some cause for concern here. So, we're going to be working, again, with our fellow agencies to try to figure out a path forward that's, you know, that does provide some protection for the tracks, but, you know, again, provide some beach and public access, too.
Absolutely.
So, in the very short term, we'll see.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Nadoff?
I just want to thank folks for, it's Friday morning, but for sticking it out and bringing some of these things, and I wanted to raise up the, it was very, in particular, I appreciated the update on the plans and the studies at Carmel River State Beach. That's something that we're, I'm sure the commission's going to be watching very carefully. It's, agree that it's a huge, hugely important resource, and just wanted to emphasize that for the rest of the commission. Also, in terms of the water supply availability, we've heard multiple days here in Monterey about that project, both the Pure Water Monterey Project and the D-SAL, and just to let the commission know that the Public Utilities Commission is working through those, some of the permit conditions that the Coastal Commission placed on that permit, and so there should be some, we should see some resolutions coming soon.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Commissioner. Other commissioners, any comments?
Okay, I was hoping, I mean, I'm concerned about these reports of 250 dB. I mean, that's almost breathtaking volume. What is the story with what's, do you know what's going on with Equinor or if any evidence of this or...
So, we, as you recall, the commission did provide a permit for Equinor to do the... to do some of the offshore testing. I believe that has been completed now. We, you know, we have, at the time, we went through all the sound levels. I don't think there's any information that we have that shows that it was outside the bounds of the permit.
Okay. So, that's just anecdotal from, coming from these folks or?
I'm not sure where it comes from.
Okay. But obviously, that would be way beyond anything we would have permitted.
So, again, we went into detail on the sound levels. I am not the expert in. We want to get Cassidy back in here to talk a little bit more about, if you want to have a little more retrospective on what the sound levels that were approved and sort of what the expectations are. I think that would, it would be better to have a time to do that with all the science experts in the room. Because it is complex and people can throw around numbers without context. And that, it sounds, it does sound scary. But I think we did a thorough analysis. We feel that this Commission, you know, we recommended approval. The Commission approved a permit that we felt was protective of marine life.
Yeah, I mean, you know, anything, I'm crystal clear that it was nothing even remotely near that. I think it was around 100 dB. But anyway, okay, so maybe we'll hear about that next time we hear from Cassidy at the next meeting. You could, if that's okay, just circle back since there were several reports of damage as a result of that. That's Carl, do you, no, you were just, oh. Okay, all right. Not seeing anything else, I'd like to turn to, back to Wednesday's agenda, to the statewide issues, beginning with approval of minutes, item nine. Do we have a motion with regard to approval of minutes? And this is from which, the March meeting?
Moved over the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call vote on this? No? All right, it's unanimous approval for approval of minutes. All right, seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. I guess we'll move on to the conservancy report, which I'm going to give just a little bit of a detailed version because it was pretty remarkable what happens at these conservancy meetings. And I would refer everybody to the website of the conservancy, but I want to call out a couple really exciting items. One of the items up in Humboldt County, there was an old mill site, the Oric Mill Site, and it's gradually being restored and transformed. And it's where Prairie Creek and Redwood Creek come together. And it's just super important habitat for fisheries. And herd of deer, a herd of elk have just moved in there. And it was incredible because they're there, they're in the middle of the restoration. And it's all just been down to dirt now, and they're all just still there on the dirt. It's really, it's like that is their spot. But anyway, that project granted $3,370,000 to Save the Redwoods League to construct public access improvements and visitor amenities for now what's been named the O'Rue Redwoods Gateway and Restoration Project. And another incredibly exciting aspect of that is that that land is going to be turned over to the UROC. And the UROC are currently the main contractor doing all of this restoration work, doing all the planting, doing everything that's required there. And this will be one of the first co-management sites with national and state parks and the UROC Nation or any, for that matter, any, any tribe. So, it's pretty exciting. I think this movement toward co-management is really exciting. And there were just a number of other items that would be of great interest to us. Just one more I'll call out, because I'm a big fan of Save the Redwoods League, was a grant of $8,500,000 for the 4,566-acre Lost Coast Redwoods property, which is just phenomenal in northern Mendocino County. There was a variety of grants given down here in Monterey County and San Diego. And quite a large grant went to the Baylands, the continued restoration of the Baylands. So, it was just a great meeting, a lot of grants given that I'm sure would inspire everybody. So, take a look and I'm sure it'll make your day. Thanks. That's that. And then, do we have any other reports, Santa Monica Mountains?
No.
Santa Monica Bay restoration? And Deputy AG?
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two reports this morning. First, I am pleased to report that in Mendocino Railway versus Jack Ainsworth and City of Fort Bragg, Deputy Attorney General Patrick Tuck prevailed in the Ninth Circuit in a decision that's to be published. This is the federal case brought by the railway arguing that the city and the Commission's regulatory actions are preempted. The court upheld dismissal of that case in its entirety for all those issues to be determined by the state court action that was brought by the city and the Commission.
Great, thanks so much.
And secondly, I'm also pleased to report that we prevailed in the Court of Appeal in Midcoast Eco versus Coastal Commission. It was a very nice win for affordable housing in the coastal zone. In 2022, the Commission certified an amendment to the San Mateo County's LCP, specifically to allow for a 100% affordable project in the Moss Beach area. Midcoast challenged that certification to forestall the development of affordable housing in the coastal zone under the California Environmental Quality Act and the Coastal Act. The Court of Appeal ruled in favor of the Commission on all issues. And so, that project is clear to move forward. And also, in good news, the county has since approved a CDP for that project. So, it is moving forward as it should.
Well, that's so exciting. And congratulations to, for those victories. And our gratitude to the Attorney General's Office for all the work.
Thank you.
And to you, of course. All right, so let's move back to today's calendar. We're on the administrative calendar now. Is there a presentation on that?
Thank you. So, on item five, the administrative calendar, the conditions are acceptable to the applicants. There's no known opposition. So, we're just looking for whether four more Commissioners object to issuance of that administrative permit.
Right, do any Commissioners wish to remove the item? Seeing none, the administrative permits are approved. We'll move on to the consent calendar, item six.
Great. And on the consent calendar today, there's two items from UC Santa Barbara, one from LA County and three from Orange County. I do want to mention there's an addendum on item six E, which has some minor corrections to the staff report. And then, there's correspondence on item six C, which raised some questions about the location of the bluff edge and the required setback for the structure, which we need to look into further. So, that item is postponed, and I mentioned that earlier. So, again, conditions are acceptable, no known opposition. So, we're recommending those items get approved on consent.
Thanks so much. Mr. Schwang, are there any ex parte's? All right, any speakers?
No speakers.
All right, does anyone on the Commission wish to remove an item? And if not, entertain a motion.
Move consent.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to unanimous yes vote on this? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward to consent items that were removed from the regular calendar.
Great. So, today we have three items or two items from Orange County and an additional one from, oh my, from Montecito Shores. And, sorry, I lost my place here. So, item 10C, that's application number 5243, the Las Vegas Beach House LLC in San Clemente. Item 11A, that's the permit number 514160482 for the Monarch Beach Resort and Club's beach management plan. And then, I didn't mention earlier when I was going over agenda changes, but there was also an additional item 15A, the Montecito Shores project, that we're also recommending be moved to consent. There is an addendum on item 10C, just to clarify some ambiguities in the future response to erosion condition. Otherwise, no known opposition on these items. And we're recommending they be moved to consent and approved per the staff recommendations.
Thanks, Carl. Any ex parte's? Speakers?
For item 10C, move to consent, we had one person who wished to speak, William Smith, who indicated they would be here in person, but I'm not seeing anyone here. And then, for item 11A, we had one person, Len Rifkind, who wished to speak, and I am also not seeing them on Zoom. So, there are no other speakers.
Okay, thanks very much. Turn to the Commission, ask if there's any comments on consent items removed. And if not, a motion.
Move consent.
A motion second by Commissioner Herman. Any opposition to unanimous approval? Seeing none, the consent calendar removed from regular calendar is approved. We'll move on to DDR from South Coast District.
Great. So, item A is the South Coast District, Orange County's report. We have eight waivers for routine projects in Laguna Beach and San Clemente and three immaterial amendments. I just do want to note there's an addendum for a minor clarification on one of those waivers. Applicants are in agreement, no known opposition. So, we're asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the waivers or the amendment in the, or the report.
Thank you. Any speakers?
No speakers.
All right, is there any opposition? Do three or more Commissioners object to any item on the Deputy Director's report? Seeing none, the Commission concurs. We'll move on to, now then, to item 10B, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. This is application 523508. Applicants are MD Andrew Place. And Fernie Sai with our South Coast District Office is going to do the presentation on that. Go ahead, Fernie.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. Item F10B is an application by MD Andrew Place LLC for the conversion of a two-story duplex with a detached two-car garage to a two-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage and accessory dwelling unit located at 1405 East Seal Way in the city of Seal Beach. As shown on the screen, the site is located on the beach just inland, beachfront public path, down coast of the Seal Beach Pier and up coast of the Anaheim Bay Jettie. The city does not have a certified local coastal program, so the Chapter III policies of the Coastal Act are the standard here. Next slide, please. Coastal Act Sections 30250 and 30253 encourage a concentration of new development in already developed areas that can accommodate it to avoid cumulative impacts to coastal resources and minimize vehicle miles traveled. As the Commission has found in prior actions, these Coastal Act Sections together encourage smart growth by locating new development in appropriate areas that minimize impacts on coastal resources and discourages residential sprawl in more rural or sparsely populated areas that are not adequately developed to support new residential development and where coastal resources could be threatened. While the applicant initially proposed and is supportive of maintaining the duplex on-site, which is designated as a residential high-density location, strict adherence to the city's uncertified zoning code would result in the loss of nearly 120 residential units in an approximately four-block stretch, as shown on the screen. To be consistent with current direction from the city, the applicant is proposing a single-family residence with an ADU rather than two primary units. While this would provide two units, the ADU is an accessory unit and is not a primary residential unit as comparable to the last, to the lost primary residential unit. Therefore, special condition one is imposed, which requires attention of two units on-site for the life of the development. If two primarily approximately equally sized residential units are not approvable by the city, then a single-family residence and an ADU with a minimum size of 1,000 square feet is required. Special condition two is also imposed, which requires the applicant to submit revised final plans, reviewed and approved by the Seal Beach Plan Department, reflecting the documented local approval. This is the same approach taken by the Commission last month in a DIA project, which is located nearby. Next slide, please. As shown on the screen, the proposed project includes a second-floor deck and awning, shown in gray, that extend, extends within one foot of the seared property line and public path, indicated in green. Additionally, the screen shows the first-floor patio deck in red that has a finished floor elevation approximately two feet above the finished floor elevation of the adjacent public path. These project components raise concerns as these minimal setbacks would make it impossible for the owner of the private residence to conduct normal maintenance activities without encroaching onto the public pathway. Additionally, the lack of setback could preclude the property owners from implementing features on the property adapted to future sea level rise and storms and affect the perception of the path as being public. Next slide, please. This screen shows a photo of residences located near subject site along the public path. As you can see, some of these residences have development located right up to the public path on the ground level and above that would make it impossible for the owner of the private residence to conduct normal maintenance activities without encroaching onto the public path. Thus, in order to ensure that the applicant can't conduct routine maintenance or implement adaptive measures to the structure from within the private property without encroaching onto the public path, special condition two has been imposed, which requires applicant to submit revised plans incorporating a minimum structural setback of five feet from the seared property lines, except for the first-floor patio that must be redesigned to be located at a finished floor elevation similar to the adjacent public path. Commission staff received correspondence from the owner identifying their concern with the five-foot setback. The owner stated nearby residences have been remodeled with second and third-floor balconies built out to the seaward property line and provided pictures to support their claim. Commission staff researched these properties shown in the pictures submitted and determined that of the 20 properties shown, 15 of them were either constructed prior to the enactment of the Coastal Act or without the benefit of a coastal development permit. The other five did attain a Commission approval, but mostly predate the Commission's effort to create a setback here along the public path. The same setback will be likely required when these properties redevelop in order to protect public access. Next slide, please. Besides these special conditions, several other, other ones are recommended to address other coastal resource and hazard concerns. These includes ones addressing or requiring a waiver of rights to future shoreline-protected devices, assumption of risk, future development requiring a CDP, proper storage of construction materials, mechanized equipment, B&amp;Ps, and removal of construction debris during construction, native low-water used landscaping, and a deed restriction making sure future property owners are aware of the subject conditions. As conditioned, the proposed project is consistent with development and land use, public access and recreation hazards, biologic resources, and water quality policies of the Coastal Act. Therefore, staff recommends that the Commission approve CDP number 5-23-0508, eight special conditions. There is an addendum for this item that responds to the correspondence previously mentioned and clarifies the functions of an ADU and a local review process required prior to submission of final plans and issuance of the CDP. The motion and resolutions are on page five of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff are available for questions.
Thanks so much, Mr. C. Is there any ex parte?
And Chair Hart, if I could jump in for just a moment before we wrap up on the staff presentation. So, I did want to mention that early this morning, we received a letter from the city of Seal Beach. And it relates to the special condition requirements allowing for either a duplex or an ADU here at the site. And this is the same approach we took last month where, you know, staff's preference and what's expressed in the condition is that the applicant seek approval from the city for the duplex first. If that doesn't, if they are unable to get that approval, then they could shift to the ADU. The city's letter this morning makes it clear their position that they would not authorize a duplex. So, we have a couple of options. We don't think we need to modify the condition because we, at the same time, we've understood the city may be working on some changes to their code that would ultimately allow for a duplex at the site. And I don't know the timeline for that. But that, I think, is still a possibility. And so, we don't want to modify the condition in the event the applicant wants to take that route. But if they don't and they want to move forward, you know, sooner rather than later, I think we could accept the letter as the evidence needed that the city won't approve a duplex at this time. So, I think with that concludes my staff comments.
Thanks, Mr. Schwang, that's helpful. So, if we were to approve, let's assume we go forward with this. Does our approval remain in perpetuity? So that there, in other words, there's no time limit while they're waiting for the city to see if the city approves? Is there any point at which they would no longer be able to build the duplex if they don't go forward with the permit?
Well, it, as typical with CDPs, there is a two-year time period that the permit remains valid. If the applicant wants to extend the permit beyond that, then they could do so with a time extension. So, and there isn't, you know, an endpoint in terms of extensions other than if some changed circumstance arises. And at that point, we would have to bring the matter back to the Commission.
Is there a cost associated with the extension or any?
There is a cost, it's pretty minimal.
Okay, so it's really a? So it's really a, a pretty much of an administrative ask for the extension and it just sort of
We do report it. People do have an opportunity to object and, you know, there's a public process there. But it's usually pretty straightforward.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, I mean, everything we should do to allow the construction of a duplex. So does it make sense to extend the two years to three years to give the city time to adopt this and then to, to not have the permit expire?
I think we should allow for public comment first before we get too deep into
Okay, I'm just kind of curious what the options are. All right. Well, why don't we open it for public comment and we'll come back and consider whether these are options? All right. Is there public comment on this item?
I guess we have one person with, with the applicant. Dan, no.
Okay. Before we go to that, did I ask if there are any ex partes? All right. Seeing none, we'll open public comment.
Dan, you're in as a panelist and there you go.
Yeah. Can you all, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, first of all, I thank you, the commission and the board for giving us an opportunity to present our project today. You done an exceptional job trying to keep the coastal clean and beauty that it is. I really appreciate all that you do. With that say, you know, all the item that was listed in the report, we gonna agree to comply with most of the item except for two of them. And with that say, I submit a presentation in PowerPoint. And if, is that okay if I share the screen or how's
Yeah. Also, could we give additional time, please? I'd like to give a total of four minutes or however long he needs to go through his PowerPoint. How long do you need, sir?
Should be less than either four or five minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Proceed.
We, we have your PowerPoint on hand.
All right. If you can just launch the first page, please.
Give us a second to bring it up.
Thank you. Yep. So the main focus today, I just want to highlight two items in the report, and it's got to do with the special condition sections. The first one's gonna be one A three and the second one is one A four. And for the purpose of this presentation, we're gonna notate the first one at the second balcony and the second item as the first deck for all the subsequent slide. Please let me know if you have any question or I can move forward. But the first item in discussion is gonna be about moving or setback five foot from the property envelope on the second deck balcony. And the second item is gonna be the discussion of lower, the first-floor deck to the same level as the current wall walk. So please move on to the next PowerPoint. So as you can see, we took a picture of some of the newer development in our neighborhood as along the coastline. And this house built in two thousand nineteen or remodeled in two thousand nineteen. And you can see they have the second deck and the first floor deck is raised. The second deck's almost exactly identical level as the first deck. So there's no setback on the property envelope there. The next slide, please. And along that coal, you know, neighborhood of Seal Beach in this section, you can see most of the house, this is an older house built in nineteen sixty-four, and you can see that the, the first deck and the second deck's all lined up. Next slide, please. And the whole block essentially, if you look down the coast or you stand in one of the end section of Seal Beach and look all the way down on the Seaway line to the pier and to the naval coastal yard, you can see that everything is lined up. There's no setback or, or, you know, second floor setback here. So, so the, the point I, that we want to make is we really want to fit into the local, you know, appearance. We don't want to make anything stand out or oddity about new projects because, you know, from where I come from, which is Texas, we have a very restriction for HOA to maintain that everyone in the same neighborhood gotta be, you know, you don't make, you don't pay any help or things like that. So we just want to fit in to the local and we want that just, we know that this project's gonna, gonna take some time and effort and money, and we want to do it right. And that's therefore, you know, we want to fit into the local appearance. The next slide, please. Now, we're gonna talk about the first, the second item. This is the first step. You know, took some picture of my neighbors and, and everyone in the whole strip, they have the first-floor decks raised. And you can see that line, the red line right there is telling you that the first-floor deck is actually about a couple of foot above on the wall walk level right now. The next slide. And, you know, just, just the reason for it, the main concern that we have is gonna be the risk of flooding. And this is, you know, in two, back in two thousand twenty-three, when I have the King Kai come earlier than expected, even though we have a burn built around the coastline, the water would, you know, protrude extensively. And you can see the picture there, pretty much the water covered at least a foot, a two foot above the sea under the wall walk. The next slide, please. Sorry.
So how much more time could you? I think you need to just sort of wrap it up.
Yep. Give me one more minute, please. So essentially, we, we're looking down the road and, and there's one construction project that's going on right now. And that project, you can see the capsule and the scaffold is covering and I think it's, it's in the wall walk a little bit, but that's, that's current construction right now. So next slide. So for our project, you know, the concern that how do we maintain the second balcony? We have four entry point that we can maintain from the bottom, from the second floor itself and two on the side, which we have about three foot of, of space on each side to maintain. The next slide, please. So our deck, the second deck is about six foot and a half. If we cut short, definitely we have only one foot out and it's not gonna look or, or essentially, we're not gonna have the balcony at all. The next slide, please. So this is our conclusion. Essentially, we just want to fit in with the locals. We don't want to create oddity. We want to make sure that we follow whatever the local is doing. And every single house, this house is about nineteen forty-four when it was built and it's very old and the condition on the coast has caused the interior to deteriorate. And we need to, that's therefore we asking for, to redo this project because we have issue with electrical inside, we have issue with termite. You know, we hope that, you know, the board and the commission will prove these two items here so we can proceed with, with our projects. And that's all. That's, that's my conclusion. Appreciate you for the time.
Thank you so much for your comments in presentation. Chris?
No other speakers.
Okay. Back to staff.
Thank you, Chair Hart. So the, the main concern here that the applicants expressing relates to the five-foot setback that is required in the special conditions. This is an approach that the commission has been taking over the last several years. It is, you know, it is a new direction in terms of the pattern of development out there that we're, that we're ultimately wanting to see. And, you know, part of the reason we're seeking that, that setback, I think, was illustrated in the photographs that you saw. There were a couple of examples of projects under construction and you could see that they had to stage their scaffolding and, and, and other, you know, structures to do the, the work in the public right-of-way. And that's what we're trying to address with the five-foot setback. So I think with that, if there's any other questions, we're available.
Anything additional on the second-floor balcony?
The second-floor balcony, it's the, the same issue. I think it was shown in those photos as well that they were doing work on the upper levels and they had to, you know, the scaffolding was still located in the public right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Bring back to the commission. Commissioner Nodoff?
I just had a question on the, on the first floor that, you know, you showed that red line is, so is the first-floor deck allowed to be higher than the pathway? We saw people walking in water there.
So the first, the, the proposal is to have that elevated first-floor deck. Our condition wouldn't allow for that. But that doesn't mean that the whole house is not raised. It is further hi- higher up on, on its foundation in order to address flooding and sea level rise concerns in the future.
So it is allowed to be
So the home, the finished floor of the home is elevated. The deck itself wouldn't, we wouldn't allow for that to be elevated like it is today.
Commissioner Yoranga?
Thank you, Chair. More of a comment and an observation, curiosity. I noticed in reading the application that there were quite a number of conditions put on this project. And also the, the observation was made that there's no LCP for the city of Seal Beach. Would an LCP help with these, eliminating some of these special conditions if, if an LCP were in existence?
Thank you. So that's correct. The city of Seal Beach does not currently have an LCP, and it absolutely would be helpful in, in terms of establishing the, the correct development standards, which would include the setbacks that we're asking for today. Fortunately, the city is working actively on that, and we did recently give the city a grant to, to move forward with that work. So it, it's, it's underway.
And you mentioned that the foundation is a little higher to deal with, contain with sea level rise in the future. Are other developments from here on out gonna be looking at that? And that's why I'm curious about the, about the LCP because other projects that come forward, I think, should meet the same standards. And then one more question, is there a height limitation in Seal Beach for these developments? Because obviously, raising the foundation will raise the heights of the developments.
I'll speak to your first question. I don't know the details about Seal Beach, but I think you are correct in that we're looking at a number of, you know, anytime we're, we're reviewing development under the Coastal Act, we're looking at how to ensure that that particular development is safe from hazards into the future. And so that, in some cases, includes, you know, an increased height. We had a, a case in Stinson, if you'll remember, that was way up on, you know, I mean, it was out of ten, twenty, I can't remember even how many feet up in the air to, to address flooding concerns. So this approach is something that we had, you know, this particular approach about the setbacks as well as the increased levels of floor is something we use all over. We've seen and we have approved projects of that nature all over the state, for sure. But it's different. It depends on the particular hazards associated in any area. Some are wave run-ups, some are flooding from inland, and different approaches are appropriate for, for different types of development. But here, I think we feel comfortable this would address the hazards, concerns and flooding the way it's proposed and conditioned in front of you today. But if you have any other thoughts on Seal Beach?
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah. Thank you to the staff. And also, I would just want to comment that the, that the applicant gave, I think, cogent and reasonable arguments, although I would say that I, I side with the staff. I think the staff is more reasonable as, and fits and aligns with our mission. And it's, and I want to just reference sort of this, these setbacks along sidewalks. There's a current term being used, it's called the shy zone. And what is, it is basically a setback along sidewalks and other places where, where there are many standards where you set back fences and other things because people walking side by side and other things like that, that when you have a structure, the solid structure that's up against a sidewalk, it actually makes, it impinges upon the ability of the public to, to, to use that space, space and feel comfortable in that. And so just want to, but that is a, that is a trend in, in current urban planning now is, is to really pay attention to the shy, what they now call the shy zone. I'm happy to make a motion. I do, I do believe this is the, a good application of, of our mandate under the Coastal Act and, and as applied by staff and the findings I think are completely reasonable.
Thanks, Commissioner Wilson. I'll come back to you. I'm sorry, did you complete your Okay. We'll come back to you for the motion, but I want to circle back. So let's dig into this issue a little more. Our preference here is that a duplex be created in this spot. That's our, that's our preference. But now Seal Beach is saying, as of right now, that's not an option.
That's correct.
Okay. So how in your, in your mind do we best get to achieving our goal of having a duplex here? Because if it just goes forward, it'll be an ADU right now because that's the only option.
Well, I, I think ultimately it's the city making changes to their, their code in order to allow for it. Right now, the code has a square footage limitation saying, you know, you have to have X amount of square feet in order to have, you know, per unit. And it would, at this point, require at least a change to that. I'm not sure what else might have to be modified in their code. But, and again, that would ultimately come forward to us as part of the city's LCP certification effort.
All right. So let me turn again and ask the applicant, is it your intention then to proceed with this construction and build an ADU?
For the ADU option or duplex, we are flexible on that.
But given that Seal Beach does not allow duplex at this time, do you intend, I'm just, because I'm returning to my, the discussion I had earlier with staff about an extension of the two-year time period of the permit. But if it's your intention to move forward in that two-year period and the Seal Beach doesn't act more quickly, you would build an ADU?
Yeah, we want to comply with, with the laws, right? So
Okay.
We don't want it to go against the city or the coastal commission, to be honest. So I, I hope that we can be synced in that, but we are flexible on building either duplex or ADU.
Okay. Well, the permit, assuming it's approved here today, will allow for either. So we'll just leave the two-year period as is and we'll move forward with the motion. Commissioner Wilson?
And I, and I want to also comment that we've done a lot here over the years to move to have policies that really look at preservation of housing, not just the creation of housing. I think it's just as important. And so I really think us as a board and as a staff and everybody in that evolution, I move that the commission approve coastal development permit number five dash two-three dash zero five oh eight pursuant to the staff recommendation. I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
Right. We have a motion, a second. Is there any opposition to unanimous yes vote on this item? All right. Seeing none, the permit's approved and we'll move on to the next item. Mr. Schwang, where are we? Ten C?
So that does conclude the South Coast, Orange County items, and I think we can pass the mic to Steve Hudson.
Hey, Mr. Hudson. Nice to see you.
Hey. Thank you. And good morning, Chair Hart and commissioners. Item twelve is the deputy director's report for the South Coast District, which includes four permit waivers, two immaterial amendments, and one emergency permit. In regard to that emergency permit, it was issued to the Klondike Canyon Geological Hazard Abatement District to implement landslide remediation activities, including installation of temporary, a temporary water removal pipe, replacement of a damaged existing drainage pipe, installation of three de-watering wells, and approximately ten thousand cubic yards of grading for removal and recompaction in Rancho Palos Verdes. The deputy director's report also includes a memorandum responding to objections received to two separate but related, or to, to one immaterial permit extension, but two separate objections that were reported at our June hearing. The immaterial amendment was for the Seaside Living Trust for the addition of one hundred and twenty square feet, a one hundred and twenty-square-foot, three-and-a-half-foot-high-rooftop structure and some minor remodeling of an existing duplex in Playa Del Rey. The two neighbors objecting raised issues related to private and public views, construction impacts, and community character impacts from that three-and-a-half-foot-high-roof-access structure. The potential effects of the approved development on public views were fully evaluated by the commission and its approval of the project, and the commission found the project would result in no significant impacts to public views. Private views and light, as discussed in the two letters of opposition, are not protected as coastal resources under the Coastal Act. Thus, staff continues to recommend this item be approved as an immaterial amendment. In addition, staff received an email from a neighboring property owner. In addition, staff received an email from a neighboring property owner, Joanne Wittenberg, raising concerns regarding a second immaterial amendment, and that immaterial amendment was approved by the, was proposed by the city of Long Beach for replacement of a public boat launch ramp. Ms. Wittenberg raises concerns that a fish cleaning station would result in odors to residents and concerns regarding repavement of a public parking lot. However, both of these issues were part of the underlying approved CDP, and they are not relevant or part of the amendment for the commission now, which is limited to only the reduction in the scope of the project. It would maintain some of the existing docks on site rather than demolish and replace those same docks. Regardless, staff would note the approved fish cleaning station, which is within the scope of that underlying permit, is an important public recreational amenity. It's consistent with the Chapter III policies of the Coastal Act, and thus, staff is recommending this item be approved as an immaterial amendment today. We're not aware of any opposition to any of the other items being reported, and we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items for which action is needed today in the Deputy Director's Report. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Hudson. Returning back to the, are there any speakers on this, Chris?
No speakers.
All right. Do three or more commissioners object to an item on the DDR report? Seeing no objection, the commission concurs, and we'll move down to item 13.
Thank you. And item 13 is the Deputy Director's Report for the South Central Coast District, which includes one waiver, six permit extensions, and one certification review. The certification review is for an LCP amendment by the city of Malibu modifying policies and provisions regarding signs identifying the boundary between public and private lands. The amendment was approved by the commission at our March meeting this year, and the executive director has determined that the local government's subsequent action, accepting all the commission's suggested modifications pursuant to a resolution, is legally adequate, and that this amendment will become certified upon being reported today. I would just note, this matter is being reported pursuant to our regulations, and it doesn't require any additional action or concurrence by the commission. Staff is not aware of opposition to any of the items being reported, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the Deputy Director's Report. Staff is available for questions.
Thanks, Mr. Hudson. Any speakers?
Also, no speakers.
Okay. Do three or more commissioners object to any item on the DDR report? Seeing no objection, the commission concurs. We'll move on to item 14.
Thank you. And item 14A will be presented by Denise Gonzalez, a coastal program analyst in our South Central Coast District. We do have a PowerPoint for this item. If we could pull that up, please. And Denise, take it away.
Thanks, Steve. Good morning, Commissioners. Item 14A is a substantial issue and de novo permit action for an appeal of a coastal development permit approved by the city of Malibu for construction and installation of public access improvements at Luchusa Beach. These improvements consist of beach staircases, viewing platforms, gates, signs, fire department access, and ADA vehicular access and parking spaces. The project proposed by the applicant also included an ADA-accessible, single-stall restroom and associated onsite wastewater treatment system and leach fields. However, the city conditioned the CDP approval to remove the restroom and associated development from the project. The city's permit approval was appealed by the applicant, Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, or MRCA. Next slide, please. As shown on this slide, the subject site is situated on the south side of Pacific Coast Highway between West Sealable Drive and East Sealable Drive within the Malibu Incinal Neighborhood. West and East Sealable Drive are private gated roads and owned by the Malibu Incinal Homeowners Association, or MAHOA. In 2002, with funding provided by the California State Coastal Conservancy, MRCA acquired an approximate one-quarter-mile stretch of Luchusa Beach, including access easements with the purpose of providing public access to Luchusa Beach. This slide portrays the parcels owned in fee title by MRCA in green, and the privately-owned parcels which MRCA holds access easements over in purple. Next slide, please. As shown on this slide, the site currently provides beach access with existing beach staircases, pedestrian gates, and an existing view platform, but no restroom facilities. The project would maintain and improve the existing public access amenities at the site, as well as provide new public access amenities. The subject CDP application was delayed for several years due to litigation filed by MAHOA against MRCA for access easements, use of the beach, and other issues. In 2018, MRCA and MAHOA reached a settlement agreement that included easements necessary to implement the proposed improvements and a beach management plan that provides an operation and maintenance plan for facilitating public access at Luchusa Beach. Next slide, please. With regard to the substantial issue question, the appellant contends that the city's action to eliminate the proposed restroom and associated onsite wastewater treatment system, thereby reducing equitable and enhanced general and disabled public access to Luchusa Beach, is not consistent with the public policies, with the policies and provisions of the city's certified LCP that relate to the protection and preservation of public recreational access opportunities to and along the coast, and with the public access policies of the Coastal Act. Additionally, MRCA contends that the city's findings for requiring specific conditions of approval are unsupported by substantial evidence or legal support. In this case, the project is situated along the beach and slopes up to the roadway access points. Most of the project includes reconstructing or improving the existing pathways, staircases, gates, and signs. However, the restroom and OWTS would introduce new facilities to the coastal bluff and shoreline area, which would be visible from the beach. As shown on this slide, the restroom and OWTS are proposed at the bottom of the bluff adjacent to the terminus of East Sealable Drive. The Malibu LCP does not preclude new development if it is found to be visible from scenic areas. Rather, new development shall minimize impacts on scenic areas through measures such as siding development in the least visible portion of the site, designing structures to blend into the natural hillside setting, and minimizing grading. Additionally, the LCP requires development of public beach restrooms and public accessways to comply with the scenic visual protection policies of the LCP to the maximum extent feasible, but that those developments shall not be prohibited by application of said policies or standards. Rather than providing an in-depth visual impact analysis relative to the siding of the restroom facility or providing measures to reduce the visual resource impacts, the city's action simply conditioned the removal of the restroom facility from the project. The city's lack of adequate findings regarding the elimination of the restroom does not demonstrate that the deletion of the restroom is required to ensure consistency with the visual resource protection policies of the LCP. Next slide, please. Further, a restroom is considered an essential public access facility that would provide a much-needed beach amenity to beach visitors. According to MRCA, the nearest public restroom is approximately one mile away from Luchusa Beach. So the city's elimination of the restroom does not maximize and enhance recreation and access opportunities on and along a public beach as mandated by the Coastal Act and the LCP. Therefore, the issue regarding the city's lack of findings regarding the elimination of an essential public beach amenity will set a precedent for future public access improvement proposals before the city. These issues support a finding, support finding a substantial issue is raised regarding the approved project as condition. Thus, staff is recommending that a substantial issue exists in this case. So unless three or more commissioners wish to hear additional arguments and vote on the substantial issue question, substantial issue is deemed to exist, and we will move on to the de novo hearing on this permit application itself.
Okay, thank you so much for that excellent report, Ms. Gonzalez. And first of all, I'll ask if there are any ex parte's. Commissioner Botchko.
I'm not sure it qualifies, but Joe Edmondson sent out an Instagram of two Barbies going to the beach who needed to go to the bathroom, and then he encouraged people to call in and tell us to vote for the bathroom. If you'd like me to send you the video?
Actually, we probably do need that on record, but this is fine for you to disclose on the mic.
Okay, and then I'll send you the video.
I think it was on Instagram for the public.
Yeah, but it also asked people to call in and, you know, express their support of the bathrooms.
Okay, we'll figure out a way to get it to you. Any other ex parte's? All right, do three or more commissioners wish to have a hearing on substantial issue? All right, seeing none, substantial issue is found, and today, we're going to move forward right away with the hearing on the appeal, or on the CDP, I guess it is. Okay, Ms. Gonzalez, do you have anything further?
Yes.
Okay.
So next slide, please. The proposed project considered in this de novo CDP review is the same project approved in part by the city with the reintroduction of the restroom facilities, OWTS, and leach fields. Due to the objective of providing enhanced public access and ADA-compliant access to the coast, some of the proposed facilities would be located in areas subject to wave action, erosion, and flooding. The wave uprush analysis for the project concluded that the project is designed to withstand coastal hazards under its anticipated lifespan. The restroom facility and viewing platform are located as far landward and elevated as far vertically as feasible. Given the design purpose of providing ADA-compliant access, and the restroom and OWTS have been designed to withstand wave forces and flooding and would not result in instability to the site. Several siding alternatives were considered for the restroom. However, there are no feasible alternatives for siding the restroom in a location other than the site proposed. As seen on this slide, the restroom facility, OWTS, and viewing platform would be small in scale, clustered together, and located adjacent to existing access improvements to combine all components into one public accessway, minimizing their effect on scenic and coastal views. However, given the uncertainty of the evolution of coastal hazards and the availability of public access at the site, Special Condition 3 requires the applicant to conduct my annual monitoring and requires the applicant to submit a monitoring and assessment report to the executive director every five years. The report will analyze changes in site conditions, coastal hazards, public access, and safety to determine what future adaptive management actions should be implemented. The project also incorporates the beach management plan, which resulted from the settlement agreement between MRCA and MAHOA. This plan outlines the rules of use and enforcement for the public access improvements, details management, maintenance, and repair responsibilities, as well as signage. To ensure that the beach management plan and proposed signage are adequately implemented, Special Conditions 9 and 10 require the applicant to submit a final beach management plan and signage plan, and that any proposed changes to the plans be reported to the executive director for review and approval. Next slide. There is an addendum for this item that provides responses to two correspondence letters received regarding this item. Notably, a correspondence letter from Benjamin Resnick, property owner of Lot 141, which is shown on this slide, claims that physical improvements proposed at the terminus of East Sealable Drive would render the lot unbuildable, as vehicular access would be physically blocked. However, staff would disagree. The proposed improvements are cited on a small portion of Lot A, which is an undeveloped paper street, and vehicular access does not currently exist. Lot A is shown in blue on this slide. Therefore, the development would not impede access to Lot 141 or preclude future development on this lot. Lastly, it's unclear what, if any, development on Lot 141 could be found consistent with the Malibu LCP. Given that, as can be seen on this aerial photograph of the site, much of the project, much of the property is located seaward of the wave uprush limit, and as discussed in detail in the addendum, the State Lands Commission has determined that the majority of the property is also located seaward of the mean high tide line. Staff also received a correspondence letter supporting the staff recommendation on Thursday from MAHOA. In closing, staff is recommending approval of the de novo CDP for this matter, subject to the 13 special conditions listed on pages nine through 20 of your staff reports. The motion for approval of the de novo permit with conditions can be found on page eight of the staff report. This concludes the staff's presentation. Staff, including our coastal engineer, Jeremy Smith, are available for questions.
Thank you so much for that great report, Ms. Gonzalez. And now we'll open the public hearing and ask how many speakers we have, and is the original applicant one of them?
We have eight speakers, and we do have the applicant.
All right, so let's bring the applicant on, and let me ask how long, depending on who's representing the applicant.
Give us a second, and we're bringing in Joseph Smith from the city of Malibu.
Oh, is the city is going to, but is the city the applicant, or is the MRCA?
It's unclear. Oh, MRCA, okay. Mario Sandoval and Elena Agar.
All right, so, Mr. Sandoval, are you going to be, how long do you need to speak about this, and are both of you going to be speaking, or one of you?
Yes, good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, staff. I will be speaking on behalf of the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, the applicant and appellant under this appeal. Elena Agar, our coastal project special counsel, is also on the hearing and can be available for questions. I will need probably about 10 minutes just to run through a very quick presentation, just to give you a historical overview.
You know, since we just had a pretty complete presentation by staff, do you think you could cut that just a bit?
I can absolutely cut that down.
Okay, that would be great, because I thought staff, Ms. Gonzalez just made a great presentation of all the issues, so if you could just move through yours more quickly, that would be great.
Absolutely.
And why don't we give you eight minutes and see if we can wrap it up and eat?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Mario Sandoval. I am a coastal planner and project manager with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, MRCA. As I said, I'm here with Elena Agar, as well as with the majority of our consultant team, who is available on the Zoom hearing for any technical questions that may need to be addressed. Before we use an item brought up on appeal for some much-needed public access improvements at Luchusa Beach in the city of Malibu, we support the staff's recommendation to determine that the substantial issue does exist and that recommendations for approval with special conditions. Given the storied history of Luchusa Beach, we wanted to take this opportunity to provide you with a bit of a historical overview of public access to Luchusa Beach culminating with this project for you today. Next slide, please. Here we have an aerial photograph of the Malibu coast from 1928. In the center, we have what is now commonly known as Luchusa Beach to Victoria Point and Broad Beach to the right, and El Matador Beach to the far left in this image. Please note, the only visible development is the Waynini Malibu Port Los Angeles Railway, developed by the Ringe family, seen here, running west to east on the south-facing Malibu coastline. This railway is the precursor to the future Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. By 1935, you'll see the tract has been subdivided for residential development. This occurred in 1932, and we start seeing dirt roads extending from the railway to those structures, which we now refer to as West and East Sealable Drive within the tract. Next slide, please. By 1944, the original railway has been abandoned, and a paved roadway and highway system has been established, with Broad Beach Road following the original railway and the Pacific Coast Highway extending to Ventura County. Next slide, please. By 1964, we really see the result of post-war development boom, beginning to wall off the coastline. Next slide, please. And here's Luchusa Beach in 1977. By now, we have the benefit of the California Coastal Act regulating the coastal zone and development, quite the transformed coastline, spanning 50 years from the first image. Next slide, please. And this is Luchusa Beach in 2001. This is the same year that the Coastal Conservancy funded the MRCA's acquisition of the 22 vacant beach lots and multiple public access easements. Next slide, please. And finally, this is Luchusa Beach contemporarily here in the year 2024. Next slide. Here's a quick summary of the public access history spanning from the tract subdivision in 1932 to the 2001 public acquisition of those 22 beach lots, 11 public access easements, and 48 access and recreational easements reserved by the common owner, which was the Adamson Ringe family. Next slide, please. Since the Since the public acquisition over 23 years ago, the MRCA has faced many challenges, including litigation brought by the local homeowners association and a lengthy settlement negotiation that includes a beach management plan, which you heard from staff's presentation. The settlement was executed in 2021, and we have moved ahead expeditiously with those public access improvements originally proposed in 2006. Next slide, please. You've seen other maps and figures in the presentations today. Here you see the publicly-owned portions of La Chusa Beach and the access easements that connect the public right-of-way on Broad Beach Road managed by the City of Malibu to those beach lots down on the coastline. Next slide, please. And finally, we do want to draw your attention to some visitation data from self-own location pilot project that included La Chusa Beach along with 50 other beach sites. The MRCA is part of a larger working group that developed this pilot project with data researchers and scientists from Cal State Channel Islands and Sea Grant and our partners Beacon as well. In this image, I want to highlight the importance of these public access improvements at La Chusa Beach and why they are so critical. Who do these improvements serve? Obviously, everyone in the public, but obviously, they serve many communities that travel far distances that we may not assume come to Malibu's western shores. But the evidence over five years of self-own location data shows that there is high visitorship and far-flung visitorship. Here you can see the census block tracks in orange. Those census tracks are the 30% most disadvantaged census tracks in the state of California per Calen Virus screen. The census tracks you see highlighted in that magenta color are the top 10 most disadvantaged census tracks per Calen Virus screen that produce visitors to La Chusa Beach based on self-own location data that we've purchased and analyzed with our partners from Cal State Channel Islands. And so, all to say, it's critical that these public access improvements come online. We've had... This property's been in the public trust for about 23 years. We've been moving forward expeditiously to move on these public access improvements since 2006 with an application before the City of Malibu originally, gone through litigation, and now we are here before you today to finally consider approval of these public access improvements, which would be incredibly important to communities we serve locally, but also communities we serve in the broader region across jurisdictional boundaries. Next slide, please. And so, we urge you to support staff's recommendation to approve this project with the 13 special conditions. I will be available for questions, along with my colleague Elena Agar and any consultants that may be able to answer any technical questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Sandoval, and especially for the historical photos. That was fascinating, and I know we all really appreciate that. So, thanks for your presentation. Now we'll turn to the remaining speakers. They'll all have two minutes.
Okay, we'll start with Joseph Smith, followed by Roxana Aguilar and Elizabeth Camacho. Joseph Smith.
If you could show the photo that I had submitted, please. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, Chair Hart, members of the commission. My name is Joseph Smith. I'm a contract planner with the City of Malibu and wish to address the commission on the city's coastal permit approval, but now the De novo hearing. I had hoped to have had the opportunity prior to the commission's finding a substantial issue to make these comments, but I'll have to make them here. What's most important and apparent is a photo that's on page one of the city's comment letter now displayed on your screen that shows the degree of public view blockage that will result from the restroom being cited in this location. This image is being displayed on the screen. The picture's from the bottom of the public viewing area, the base of the stairs. It's a stunning natural coastline scenic area that's looking west and embraces everything that Coastal Act and the city's LCP is trying to maintain. We respectfully disagree with Coastal Commission staff's position that the city did not do enough visual analysis. This picture tells the story in and of itself. It was submitted as part of the public correspondence that was considered by two planning commission hearings, and I want to be clear that the city's decision did not come lightly. Over the course of those two meetings, the city tried, the planning commission tried exceptionally hard to work with MRCA during the public hearings to find an alternate location for this restroom facility. MRCA was unwilling and inflexible to do so. We then later found out during the public hearings, the reason this is the location and is the only location is because of a private settlement agreement with the homeowners association, and as such, was unwilling or unable to move it. This was also confirmed by a representative of the HOA itself. The issue is simply this. A settlement agreement is a private matter. Public view blockage is a public matter, and the applicant wished to cite a restroom facility in this location that would irreparably block public views moving forward. The city fully understands the importance of public access and amenities, which include restroom facilities. The city is not anti-restroom, but it is anti-public view blockage. If you approve this as-is, know that the public views will be permanently blocked as a result of a private settlement agreement. That was the result of private litigation between these two parties. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Roxana Aguilar, Elizabeth Camacho, and then Violet Segovia. Roxana? You're muted still.
Thank you for that. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for this time. My name is Roxana Aguilar. I'm the Director of Programs at Community Nature Connection, and we really appreciate being here to support. Basically, we submitted a letter to support the commission's staff recommendations on agenda item, on the current agenda item, and we urge the Commissioners to adopt the staff recommendations on the two motions, which are to vote no or deny motion A and vote yes on an approved motion B. Through Community Nature Connection, we are a nonprofit that focuses on increasing access to the outdoors for communities impacted by racial, socioeconomic, and disability injustices, and we have taken over, I would say, over 50 community members to La Chusa Beach, and they have enjoyed the beach, but we have found that there are a lot of access issues to get to the beach, so we highly recommend that the amenities and improvements be approved, because La Chusa Beach is a, it's a beach that is so beautiful and should be accessed by all. And we, this project will also enhance visitor, excuse me, will enhance visitor and beachgoer experiences by providing for basic necessities like restrooms, creating an inclusive environment to be had regardless of ability, and it will support and invite people to spend time in nature, which is very important for many health benefits. So, in closing, Community Nature Connection urges the Coastal Commission to adopt the staff's recommendations, and in doing so, you are improving the equitable access to all members of the public, and thank you for your time. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, Elizabeth Camacho, Violet Segovia, and then Kathleen Summers. Elizabeth?
Good morning, Commissioners. Elizabeth Camacho, on behalf of the Malibu Ensignal Homeowners Association, also known as Mahoa. Mahoa has worked diligently with the MRCA over many, many years to resolve issues of concern to Mahoa regarding the proposed improvements at La Chusa Beach. This collaboration has resulted in a mutually acceptable plan for the improvements of the MRCA property, and that plan is memorialized in a settlement agreement between Mahoa and the MRCA. This settlement agreement includes, among other things, a resolution of the differences that the parties had regarding the MRCA's access easements over West and East Sea Level Drive, which are critical components of their proposed project. The settlement agreement is a result of tremendous effort and compromise, and we'd like to really emphasize that this has been a very, very long time coming. These disputes go back over three decades. Litigation began in 1990, and the negotiations that resulted in the settlement agreement that's in place today began over 10 years ago. Approval and issuance of the CDP that's proposed in the appeal before you is necessary in order to effectuate the settlement agreement. The project will improve access to La Chusa Beach and add new amenities, and will also provide important protections for the surrounding Mahoa residential community. These protections include pedestrian gates that will be locked during nighttime hours, vehicular and pedestrian gates on both West and East Sea Level Drive, and implementation of the beach management plan. And just one clarification that I wanted to make, I thought that there was a comment during the staff presentation that there's a special condition that requires a final beach management plan, but the beach management plan that has been proposed and that I believe is required by Condition 10 is in Exhibit 7 in the staff report. So, to conclude, Mahoa supports the project, and we respectfully request that the commission approves the CDP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Violet Segovia, Kathleen Summers, and then Benjamin Resnick.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I'm actually here to share a video, and if you guys can play that at the moment.
We never received a video from you, actually.
Oh, I sent the email for it yesterday when I submitted my application to speak.
We unfortunately don't have it on hand.
Okay. So, it was a video on the support, and it was to share the video that I'd seen on the Barbies that was mentioned earlier, so it's kind of unfortunate you guys don't get to see it today.
There seems to be a really strong desire to see it. Let's see if, is it possible?
Can I share my screen, maybe?
I don't know. Does that work? Could she hold up her phone to the screen and just show? Okay, can you allow her to share her screen?
No, I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay, we can't do that.
Maybe while we're finishing public comment.
Why don't we come back to you? We'll go through a couple other, go through the rest of public comment, then we'll return to you and see if we can get the video up.
Okay.
Next is Kathleen Summers, and then Benjamin Resnick.
We're going to try and move forward, Chris, with the remaining speakers.
Yeah, Kathleen Summers. You're in as a panelist. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, is that working?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm just asking that the assurances made to me by the MRCA and the HOA will continue to permit me to have my private property rights without interference, because I own property both on upper and lower, and this is my main access point to the beach community. It is an access not just to the beach, but also to other private property, so I thank you for those assurances. I'm assuming that those are in place, and that I just asked that be confirmed. I do understand why the MRCA has a desire for the restroom. I do know with all the number of Malibu beaches that get closed because of problems, and there's an active, alive kelp bed and the issues with kelp, that whatever efforts are made there that, that it try to maintain the health of this beach, because one of the attractiveness of this beach is how healthy the ocean is here, more so than other places, so it does concern me that it's there, and I do agree with City of Malibu that it is a view issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And our other speaker, Benjamin Resnick, we're not seeing your name in the attendees list, but we see someone with their hand raised with the name iPhone. You should be able to unmute now, and say your name.
Hi, Benjamin Resnick. Can you hear me?
Yes, and go ahead.
Thank you very much, honorable members of the commission. You received my letter, and there was an addendum staff report responding to it. I just want to quickly point out, the addendum maintains that vehicular access to my Lot 141 would still be maintained, because the improvements being proposed are so small. If that's the case, I would ask that if the commission is so inclined as to approve this project that it condition it on enabling vehicular access to Lot 141, that access, which is sort of being questioned by the addendum staff report, is based on the original subdivision that Lot A was, which is the extension of Sea Level Drive, was, and it created an easement for all lot owners, or ingress egress. It's the access easement. The fact that the Conservancy owns it in fee and wants to build on it, questionable legally whether that's proper, since it's an access easement, but be that as it may, as long as the commission can condition it so that Lot 141 has vehicular access, then my property rights to build a house, no matter how small, is maintained. The addendum points out that back in 2007, we started the process, but you may recall by 2008, 2009, the Great Recession hit, and I decided at that time to stop. I have a right to continue, and I intend to, and I have a right to extend the improved portion of Sea Level Drive, which currently terminates either through a driveway or to build it out to Lot 141. So, with that, I ask the commission not to permit something that clearly may block the buildability, the ability to build on Lot 141. I don't think that's, should be allowed or intended, and with that, I thank you and hope that you can protect our right to do that. In closing, I would just say, I don't know why the state did not want to purchase this lot.
Thank you, sir. That completes your time. All right, so where are we with the earlier public comment video? Any luck with that, Chris?
Yes, I think we have it ready, and Violet Segovia is back.
All right. Yep, she's back. Uh-huh, we can see it. Great, thank you. That's, that's good. Thank you. Just want to note that that is the ex parte that was received, so that resolves that. Do we have, do we have any other speakers on this item?
Did Violet want to make a closing statement on that?
I just wanted to say thank you, Commissioners and staff, for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and no other speakers.
All right, bringing it back to staff, Ms. Gonzalez or Mr. Hudson? Any further comment?
Sure, I can go ahead and start. I was just going to ask if Billy could bring up my PowerPoint presentation, specifically Slide 7. And then I can just go ahead and start. Just some brief comments, just to clarify that it's not only the settlement agreement between Mahoa and MRCA that allowed the restroom to be proposed and approved in that location, but that MRCA does not have the legal ability to construct the restroom in another location. As shown on this slide, MRCA was kind of restricted to placing the restroom on either the lots that they own in fee title, which are shown here in green, or if they have easements over the parcels in purple. And then the other clarifying comment that I wanted to add regarding the comments made by Mr. Benjamin Resnick regarding his Lot 141, staff has never received any evidence of an easement to have vehicular access over Lot 141. And so, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Steve if he wanted to add anything.
Okay, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Denise. And I would just add, in regard to those pictures that were shown by the city, that appeared to be just where the down-coast area was blocked. That was a view of the site as taken from what would become the walkway to the restroom, and there would be uninterrupted views from other areas of the site, including the public access stairway itself. And from staff's perspective, this is a, and as the city staff noted in their original recommendation to their planning commission, which was for approval of the restroom and the project as a whole, this was an unfortunate decision by the city's planning commission to strip planning commission to strip the rest, this public restroom facility out of the project against their own staff's recommendation. And from our perspective, we would just note that this project provides more than just views of the beach, it provides access for the pub, to the beach, and thus uninterrupted views and access, uh, from the sandy areas of the site. So, uh, we do believe it's an important, uh, important project. And just to add, uh, to the response that Denise gave to Mr. Resnick, to note that, uh, not only has Mr. Resnick not provided evidence that he has access to the, to the site, and we did have an application from Mr. Resnick many years ago for geo-testing on his site, and that was the question that we asked, and unfortunately, he was never able to provide that information, but if he were able to provide that information in the future, uh, there's still questions, as discussed in the addendum, of the buildability of a, uh, lot that appears to be, and it's entirely on the sandy beach, and the majority of that site is below, uh, the mean high tide line, and is covered by wave action much of the time. So there are questions, and it would be a complex site to build on, but if that were to be possible in the future, then the development that is before us today would not preclude that property owner's ability to access their site. And so we just note that we don't recommend adding any additional conditions, uh, to accommodate his request. And with that, I'll just note that our staff, including our commission engineer, uh, are here today to answer questions, and, uh, that's, that will conclude our staff comments.
Okay, thanks so much, Mr. Hudson. All right, I'll bring it back to the Commission, Vice Chair Escalante.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll, I'll be really quick. I want to sort of acknowledge and, uh, the great work from MRCA over the years, um, to get this done. We visited La Chusa, I actually visited a couple of times in that last meeting when we were in Calabasas, and, um, personally, what I learned from the experience is nothing blocks your view more than having to run out of the beach to go to the bathroom and not be able to come back, and especially when, um, in that area, when it's so hard for people to get in and out. I mean, already that stairway is pretty steep, um, and let's not even talk about being, walking around through that road access. So, um, I do, you know, I, I, I wouldn't sort of, um, out of hand be like, block the views, you know, but I do think in this spot, I, it's, it's been, it's been a hard-fought compromise, and it is a necessity, not just sort of for, uh, human health, but also for water quality. And I can, you know, I mean, what do people do? If they're there, they can't leave, they don't want to leave, they go into the water, or, or worse, go under the houses that are further down. So I, I think this is, this is a, a wonderful moment, and I look forward to receiving the invitation for the ribbon cutting for, for this area, so, um, of course I will be, yes, thank you.
Thanks so much, Vice Chair. Before we make a motion, I just want to align myself with the comments that were made by Vice Chair Escalante, and, uh, express my appreciation for the work of MRCA and the, along with Vice Chair Escalante. I think a lot of us look forward to attending the groundbreaking for this new access point or this greatly improved access point. So, thanks so much for everything, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bocca for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we don't need motion A, right? We've already done substantial issue?
Right, one B.
Okay. Uh, I move that the Commission approve Coastal Development Permit Number A4MAL240020 pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I'm asking for a yes vote.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any objection to unanimous approval of this motion? Seeing none, the motion is approved. All right, we're now going to move on to item 15A, which will be our last item.
That was moved to consent, actually, that was...
Oh, it was, so 14 was our last item.
That's correct.
All right, in that case, we will be meeting in San Diego on October 9th through 11th. Want to express my great gratitude to, uh, to Vanessa for setting all of this up, to our staff, to AGP, to, uh, Jose, welcome. Thank you so much for everything, including your interpretation to Chris. Billy, everybody, thank you guys so much for everything, and we'll see you next month.